Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for joining us. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I would like to welcome everyone to our virtual meeting. And I would like to explain this meeting format. Tonight, we have our city council members and staff visible on a live video feed. Members of the public have been invited to comment on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org in advance of the meeting, or to participate live through a web link, or by calling in on the telephone. All members of the public who are participating live have been muted at this time. When the time for citizens' right to speak comes, we will unmute all members of the public, and I will ask you to speak in order based on the first letter of your last name. Further instructions will be provided at that time. When we unmute the public, please keep background noise to a minimum. You may choose to mute yourself through your own device. If you do not plan to speak at all this evening, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. If you do plan to speak this evening, when you speak, please clearly state your first and last name, please spell your last name, and give your street address for the record. After everyone has had a chance to speak, I will close the time for public comment, and public participants will be muted. We have three public hearing on tonight's agenda. At the time of the first reading of these three agenda items, they were all noticed to take place in a person meeting at the city council chambers. As we are now on stay-at-home orders and not able to meet in city council chambers, I will entertain a motion on each of these to continue the agenda item to another meeting. I will not open the public hearing tonight, and therefore, public comment on these three items is not appropriate. We will take public comment on these items when the public hearing is opened at a later date. Public comment on agenda items for decisions, resolutions, and motions will be taken during discussion of each of these items. We appreciate your patience with this virtual format. As with our in-person meetings, we hope that we create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. Thank you. I would now like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for April 13th, 2020. You will now see an image of an American flag on the screen. Please stand as you are able and join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll of the numbers.
Ms. Hoppe.
Present.
Ms. Hutchinson. You're on mute, Judy.
Here. Okay.
Mr. Urban.
Present.
This whole team.
Present.
Dr. Weaver. Mr. Stites.
Present.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, seven of the eight council members have answered the roll call. We have a quorum.
Okay. I know that Ms. Weaver was on earlier. Have we seemed to have lost her? Is she back with us?
We're working on it.
Thank you. Okay. We have three proclamations tonight, and I'm really excited to invite, to talk about Arbor Day and Wheat Ridge being a Tree City USA. And I have a proclamation. I would like to invite Zach Lovato, our Parks, Forestry, and Open Space Manager, to join us, as I would Margaret Paget, the Forestry and Open Space Supervisor, and Ms. Donna Davis, Program Specialist with the Colorado State Forest Service. While I read this proclamation. This is a proclamation for Arbor Day and Tree City USA, April 2020. Whereas, trees have always been regarded as an important asset to the citizens of the community of Wheat Ridge, providing one of the first business opportunities in the 1860s. And whereas, trees continue to be respected as an important part of the quality of life to the citizens in the city of Wheat Ridge and visitors.
This meeting is being recorded.
Enhancing property values and community spirit. And whereas, our mature trees are suffering from the devastation of environmental stresses, including insect and disease, winter drought, and severe temperatures. And whereas, citizens, businesses, green industry, elected officials, and staff continue to work together to maintain and provide for tree-covered streets, parks, and properties as part of a comprehensive community forestry program. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge has been awarded Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore, I but starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, do hereby declare Friday, April 24th, 2020, as City of Wheat Ridge Arbor Day Celebration, encouraging all citizens and businesses to care for, enjoy, and appreciate trees in your yard and neighborhood.
Oh, cool.
Thank you for joining me. I would, Mr. Lovato, or Ms. Paget, or Ms. Davis, do you have any remarks that you would like to leave our citizens with? Pick up, and I'll recognize you. Well, I thank you all for being here. You know, in this, I'm particularly excited that we've got trees in our community now because it provides us good shelter in the sun. And now, okay, we've got a presentation on screen sharing here.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was just waiting to see if Margaret or Zach wanted to say something first.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to introduce you.
Oh, are you? Okay, thank you.
Zach, go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, so, um,
Introduce yourself.
This year has been kind of a weird year for Arbor Day. Certainly appreciate everybody's patience while we readjust our celebratory activities for the fall. We are actually going to be planting a single tree this year on Arbor Day, just to make sure we commemorate this year. But we'll do that with our own in-house people. And we'll probably do it in Anderson Park somewhere. But as far as the celebrations, we're going to put those off until the fall, and hopefully, this whole awful thing will be done by then, and we have a whole host of fun activities to engage with our community. Go ahead, Donna.
Oh, thank you. And it's just with a great deal of honor and pleasure that, on behalf of the National Arbor Day Foundation, that I present the city of Wheat Ridge with your 41st Tree City USA recognition. And I intentionally put these pictures in there because the city of Wheat Ridge, there's so many places that we just take for granted how beautiful they are. You have your wonderful librarian area, the trails and the walkways. This is at the city park, Anderson Park, with a lot of the kids. And this one happens to be part of one of your library trees. So it takes a lot of work to maintain a beautiful community, and you guys have had that commitment for 41 years. Just want to let you know, though, it's not a distinction that you just automatically receive. The city has to make application each year. There's an electronic application form with the Arbor Day Foundation, and that has requirements. There are four requirements. One is that you have a tree board or a department that is responsible for the trees in the city of Wheat Ridge, which you do. And you also have to have a tree ordinance, which gives authority to that board or that department to take care of the trees within the community. You have to have a community forestry program. And the city of Wheat Ridge in 2019 spent $11.20 per capita on trees within the community. The minimum for the Tree City USA requirement is $2 per capita. But that involves things like planting 92 trees, and a lot of their infrastructure maintenance and rejuvenation and restoration that is needed within the city to maintain this live infrastructure that has a lot of value for our communities. Our community. And also, the volunteer time reported in the application was 225 hours of volunteer time, just with probably the stewards that you have working to help the community. You need to have an Arbor Day proclamation, of which you guys, I think, are going to have one this year. And I just extend my appreciation in. And it's just awesome that you guys are doing this under the coronavirus. It's been a difficult year, but I do appreciate that just having people look out their kitchen window or out their front room window, just to enjoy something that we kind of take for granted sometimes, but an Arbor Day proclamation. And then you also have to consider a day to celebrate Arbor Day, which you guys did last year with the Wilmore Davis elementary students at the Happiness Community Garden, planting fruit trees, and just kind of adding a lot to the community through your education with the children and with the adults and the citizens engaged in the community. So just as a summary, Colorado, I think there's a lot to consider that it's something that affects things over space and over time. You guys have done this for 41 years. And you know, you could touch trees one year and then walk away, and perhaps think that you've made an impact, and you have. But it takes years to kind of continue that energy so that our cities are beautiful. And it is over space. Just to let you know, the city of Wheat Ridge, there's 95 Tree City USAs in Colorado, so that's kind of a neat thought that if everyone did their little bit of difference each year, how much that actually grows. And I think nationally, there's something like just under 3,600 Tree City USAs in the United States. So collectively, I think that this makes lots of differences, not only individually, but collectively. So instead of reading all the virtual that you have received, I just wanted to share this one sentence. As a Tree City USA community, you share with the growing number of communities in Colorado, in our nation, the many economic, social, and ecological values that healthy trees provide each of us. I think we all notice that today, when we're kind of stuck inside, we can at least go outside and get some fresh air and enjoy a walk around our neighborhoods, practicing social distancing. But I think that we all recognize how valuable that is for each of us. So I guess I didn't go into all the values, but you can go in. You can celebrate Arbor Day with the Arbor Day Foundation. There's a lot of virtual things you can do with your kids at home. And this one down here, it says also Vibrant Cities Lab. The website is covered up, but it's the location where you can look and look at all the health, economic, ecosystem services, and things that this tree infrastructure provides us that we don't even always pay attention to. So just thank you very much for today and letting me kind of share for a minute. Thank you to Margaret and Zach, and Karen, I think you're out there somewhere. But thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Davis, and Mr. Lovato, and Ms. Paget, for joining us tonight. And thank you very much for bringing Tree City USA back to our city. We really appreciate it. We've got great trees in our city. We've got great citizens that take care of those trees, too. So I want to thank everybody out there that helps with the trees. I know I've got a lot on my property, and there's always something to do with them, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bedd.
All right. Thanks a lot. All right. I would like to move to our second proclamation. This is for Child Abuse Prevention Month in April 2020. I wanted to see if Ms. Jennifer Kempes was on the line with us. Were we able to make contact?
Mayor, this is Ally Scheck. I don't see Ms. Kempes. I'll unmute and just see if we've missed her.
Okay.
Is anyone here from Ralston House? I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry that we may not have made that connection, but I want to make a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm and fear. All children do not receive appropriate care. In fact, too many children become victims at the hands of abusive predators. And it is up to us as a community to tirelessly work to end it through awareness and action. Every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many. And whereas, the month of April has been designated nationally as Child Abuse Prevention Month. At this time, we encourage all Wheat Ridge citizens to join in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of children. And whereas, Wheat Ridge has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the absurance they need. And whereas, our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs, such as Ralston House, succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas, all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge hereby proclaims the month of April 2020 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. And witness thereof, I have set my hand upon the seal of the city of Wheat Ridge this 13th day of April 2020. Thank you. Verium. And we have one other proclamation tonight to designate the week of April 19 through 25, 2020 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And I believe we have Dana Easter with us tonight. Can we bring Dana into the screen? If she's still with us.
We have Dana, and we have Vista.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us. Okay, this is a proclamation to designate the week of April 19 through 25, 2020 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas, the Victims Rights Movement has resulted in the passage of laws at the local, state, and federal levels that establish a central right for victims. And whereas, crime victims' rights acts passed here in Colorado and at the federal level have provided victims with ways to participate meaningfully through the criminal justice process. And whereas, the rights of crime victims are best protected when all participants in the criminal justice process, not only victims, are appropriately educated about victims' rights. And whereas, supporting victims of crime is critical to the United States justice system because our support honors the experiences of victims and allows them to find autonomy and empowerment through achieving self-defined goals. And whereas, we must help victims access the justice, assistance, and support they need to rebuild their lives. And whereas, advocacy by and for victims of crime is itself a form of seeking justice, no less than justice sought in the courts. And whereas, the accomplishments of Victims Rights Movement achieved through compassion and collaboration and built upon the courageous advocacy of individual victims and their families across the country inspire in us hope for future progress and greater healing. And whereas, we are determined to respond to crime and violence by helping victims find not only support, recovery, and justice, but also a sense of hope for their future. And whereas, National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim service providers, and bringing hope and healing to all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of April 19 through 25, 2020 as Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm this city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime, and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our responses to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. And witness thereof, on this 13th day of April 2020, Bud Starker, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we also have Chief Murtha on.
Okay. Like to recognize Chief Murtha. Chief, would you like to say a couple of things?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to say that the victims' rights advocates that we have are second to none that I've ever met. And tonight, we have with us Ms. X-line, who, as a testament to her dedication, has stayed on through the coronavirus when she had planned on leaving and turning over the reins. So I know Dana is with us as well, but Ms. X-line is here tonight. And I just wanted to say thank you. In the middle of the night, last night, when we had a critical incident, I think there was three or four folks out there assisting us, as they always do. They don't ask for much, and they give way more than we could ever give to them. I hope that Ms. X-line gets a chance to go and do what she wants to do in her next life, but I appreciate her dedication. And I wanted to say, on behalf of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, our sincere thanks to her and all the members that work and provide us and the victims with such great service. Thank you very much for what you do.
Well, thank you much, Chief. You know, this is really an important thing, you know, weaving the fabric of our community together to support our victims of abuse and neglect. And it really, the good that we do will long outlive our time on this earth. So thank you very much for your support of this program. We appreciate it in the city, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. X-line. Thank you, Dana.
Vista, would you like to say anything?
Thank you. Just briefly, Mayor, and Council, and Chief, thank you so much for speaking. We are honored every year when you make this proclamation and appreciate working with your city and your officers very much. We have a close relationship, I feel, very cooperative, and very helpful. So we at Victim Outreach appreciate that, and we try to serve your citizens and your officers as well. I sure can answer questions, and so can Ms. X-line, if you all have any.
Did the Council have any questions they'd like to ask our victim advocates? It looks like we don't have any questions tonight, but I would like to thank you both very much for joining us. And Chief, thank you for joining us at our virtual meeting. We appreciate you being here. It's an important topic, and thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will conclude our proclamations. We do not have any minutes on our package. I would like to see, were there any, let's see, word approval of the agenda? Is there any changes to the agenda from Council? Seeing none, I know that Mr. Goff wanted to speak on some matter at this time. Mr. Goff?
Councilmember Weaver had her hand up, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Weaver.
I just wanted it noted, my Wi-Fi dropped at the point of taking roll, and I just want it noted that I am here. Thanks.
Well, Ms. Weaver, it's nice to see you, and thank you for joining us. Now, Mr. Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Murtha, and should we bring Darrell on, too, Chief, or you handling this?
I think Darrell's on. I saw him, but I think we can get through this.
Okay. Yeah, the chief is requesting that we remove item number six, I believe, from the agenda, the last item. And I'll let the chief explain why.
Chief, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We had originally intended to present, for your approval, a memorandum of understanding with Jefferson County Law Enforcement so that we could add another layer of another layer of scrutiny to the memorandum, I'm sorry, to our mutual aid agreement. However, the Jefferson County Law Enforcement community was unable to come to any consensus on how that should be done. As a matter of fact, generally speaking, most law enforcement in Jefferson County believe that our mutual aid agreement already is sufficient to handle any crisis that we might have during the coronavirus, which might require us shifting resources from one jurisdiction to another. During this time, we've been deputized by the sheriff to do that, and we also have in place a very strong mutual aid agreement that Mr. Dahl could comment on if need be. However, at this point, without consensus, there's no reason to bring it forward, and it doesn't look like there's going to be any consensus in the future. Forgive me, but it was time-sensitive when we initially brought this up, so we wanted to get this in front of the Council to get approval. However, the landscape has shifted in the last few days, so I respectfully request to withdraw this item from the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Urban.
I will so move to remove Resolution 21-2020 from the agenda.
Are there objections from Council? Without objection, we will remove item number six from our agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. The public is invited, let me start again. The public is invited to speak now on any item not on the agenda for three minutes. The public's microphones have been unmuted now. If you are not speaking, please mute your telephone. I will invite members of the public to speak based on the first letter of your last name. When I come to your position in the alphabet, please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you. When I recognize you to speak, please clearly state your first and last name. Please spell your last name and give your street address for the record. And once again, I will be asking that Agenda Items number two, three, and four be continued from tonight's meeting. Comment on these three items would therefore not be appropriate at this time. We will go to citizens' right to speak now. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter A through E? If you will speak now, I will recognize you to speak. If your last name begins with A through E, if you'll just unmute your phone and speak now, I will recognize you, and you may speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter F through J? If you'll unmute your phone and ask to speak, I will be glad to recognize you. F through J.
Mr. Mayor, let me double-check with the woman behind the curtain real quick.
Yes, sir.
Make sure all of our attendees, are they unmuted? Ally?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ally.
Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter K through O? Please ask to speak, and I will recognize you. K through O. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter P through T? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you. P through T. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight whose last name begins with the letter U through Z? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you to speak. U through Z. All right, I understand that we have unmuted the, the telephones or whatever devices we have for all of the public. And I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak tonight on citizens' right to speak with your last name beginning with the letter A through Z. So anyone, anyone may speak out there on on any non-agenda items. If you would like to speak, please speak now, and I will recognize you. Do I have, do I have someone wishing to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak.
All right, please, I will recognize you. Please give us your first and last name and your address.
This is Odarka Figless, one oh five eight oh West Thirty-Fourth Avenue in Wheat Ridge, and sorry for not speaking at my turn, but I did have problems getting in. I just listened in on Congressman Pearl Mutter's town hall meeting, which was very informative. Dr. Johnson had a very interesting observation and warning. Said there are a number of markers that need to be met before we can safely congregate again. For example, the number of cases must decrease and not be increasing. But he said even after these markers are met, we need to wait at least two more weeks or at least one full incubation period before we can even think about social reintegration. He talked about the danger of repeating the disastrous mistakes of the past of starting reintegration too soon. Problem is that we have a constitutional right to challenge council decisions through referendum process. The city needs to figure out how we can safely collect thousands of signatures without putting citizens at risk before the council should even contemplate holding public hearings, such as the rezoning on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, which we have committed to opposing if it should pass through the referendum process. The time clock on referendum is strict, but council can control this by choosing to schedule the public hearing at a time when we can actually participate fully in our process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else out there, last name beginning with the letter A through Z that would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? Please ask to be recognized, and I will recognize you at this time. I do not hear anyone else that wishes to speak, so I'm going to close the citizens' right to speak at this time. Thank you. Before we continue with our agenda, I would like to explain how we will be voting on items tonight. Once we have a motion and a second, and a second and discussion on the motion is complete, I will ask council members in support of the motion to raise their hands and to keep them raised and visible until our city clerk acknowledges that he has recorded those votes. I will then ask if any council members who are opposed to the motion or would be abstaining. And the clerk will calculate those votes, and then we'll return the result of the vote. And I wanted to see, do we have all of our counselors on, on video link? It looks like we do. So now we will continue on with our agenda. We will move to our consent agenda. Ms. Hulteen, would you please introduce agenda item number one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce agenda item number one, a motion to award custodial services contracts and approve subsequent payments in the not-to-exceed amounts of seventy-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to Janie King of Centennial, Colorado, thirty-two thousand dollars, thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars to Sunshine Building Maintenance, Inc. of Lakewood, Colorado, and seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars to Mojo's Cleaning Services, Inc. of Brighton, Colorado, and approve a three percent contingency in the amount of five thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars for unforeseen custodial expenses.
This is, these are items on our consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve an award, I move to award custodial services contracts and approve subsequent payments in the not-to-exceed amounts of seventy-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to Janie King of Centennial, Colorado, thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars to Sunshine Building Maintenance, Inc. of Lakewood, Colorado, and seventy-six thousand eight hundred to Mojo's Cleaning Service, Inc. of Brighton, Colorado, and approve a three percent contingency in the amount of five thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars for unforeseen custodial expenses.
Okay.
Okay.
I, we have a motion and a second. Who's going to claim credit for the, for the second? Mr. Urban? Would the clerk, would all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand?
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to item number two on our agenda. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce agenda item number two?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number zero five dash twenty twenty, in ordinance approving an amendment to the existing plan mixed-use development, PMUD, zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses at Clear Creek Crossing, case number WZ dash nineteen dash ten. At issue, the applicant is requesting to modify the underlying zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital use. A hospital has already permitted use in the existing zoning, and the existing zoning also contemplated in six-story employment uses. However, a hospital built to six stories requires an additional twelve feet of height to meet design requirements and current building codes. The applicant is also seeking a limited additional height allowance to accommodate a rooftop elevator associated with a helipad.
Thank you. This item is a, an item for a public hearing on second reading is quasi-judicial. This was noticed at the time of first reading to be held in our city council chambers. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and the stay-at-home orders that we are now under, we are not able to gather in person at that location. So we need to renotice this item to, to us another time. So Mr. Stites, may I have a motion to continue this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to continue agenda item number two, Council Bill number zero five dash twenty twenty, in ordinance approving an amendment to the existing plan mixed-use development, PMUD, zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses at Clear Creek Crossing, case number WZ dash nineteen dash ten, including public hearing to April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, at seven P M., a virtual public hearing and direct staff to provide all required public notice of such ordinance to include necessary information for the public to be aware of the various virtual means of participating in said public meeting.
Second. Second.
We had a second by Ms. Dozeman, I believe. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a second motion to change the date of the public hearings to the June eighth city council, council meeting.
Would this be more appropriate to be an amendment to the motion or a substitute motion, Mr. Dahl?
It'd be an amendment to the motion.
Ms. Hutchinson, can you phrase that in the term of an amendment to the motion?
Okay, I have an amendment to the motion, is that right? To change the date of the public hearings to the June eighth city council meeting.
Is there a second to the amendment motion?
Oh, I'll second that, but I'll also ask a clarifying question whether that's indicated to mean an in-person meeting or a virtual meeting as described in the motion.
Okay, so we have, we have an amendment and a second. Is there discussion on the amendment? Please raise your hand, and I'll call on you if you have a discussion. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be in support of this motion so long as it is done in an in-person manner, specifically as it relates to the question that was posed under public comment regarding the referendum process. And while this particular case wasn't mentioned in that public comment, it does raise a question in my mind as to a citizen's right to referendum and whether their ability to put forward a referendum is still available during the stay-at-home order. And if we were to allow any public hearing to occur during the stay-at-home order, how would that affect a citizen's right to petition their government in the form of a referendum? So I guess I'd pose that to the city attorney and see what, you know, what can we do there?
Mr. Dahl?
As council will recall, my, this question came up in your last meeting. I promised to research it to the extent that I could. Couple of things. First, at the moment, of course, the amendment is simply changing the date. And Councilmember Urban is correct to raise the question. If the amendment passes and the motion passes, we'll change the date to a, to a June eighth meeting, but it'll be a virtual meeting because that was the underlying motion. And I leave that for you to think about. While I tell you about the research I've done around initiative referendum, the governor's stay-at-home order, and there's a more recent one dated on April ninth, but it did not change the section under critical government functions, including activities related to state, federal, and local elections, including any required acts of a political party, so long as social distancing is served to the greatest extent possible. That's what the stay-at-home order says, and I've networked that around to city attorneys, and it is the conclusion of that group that, that this applies to the actions of individuals in the petitioning process. I get it that social distancing even makes petitioning more difficult. But the, the sense of the group is that that is the intention of that exception to the governor's order. Activities related to federal, state, and local elections, including the actions of the political party. I went a little further to determine if the governor and secretary of state are intending to take any actions around that. Our constitution doesn't allow online petition signing. And what I have learned is that the governor and the secretary of state are actively discussing what executive action they might take around initiative referendum. I think that they're a little limited there because initiative referendum is something that is really governed by state statutes, and that's the legislature. But nevertheless, desperate times, desperate measures, the governor, secretary of state, I think, are having conversations. They haven't announced anything yet. So where we are at now is the governor's order through the Department of Health exempts activities related to elections, and that would include an issue of a referendum. I understand that there are additional obstacles, but the petitioning is not precluded, and the activity of going out is not precluded presently. It may be more difficult, but it's not precluded. That's what I can tell you.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion on the amended motion, on the amendment? Ms. Weaver? Ms. Weaver, you're muted.
Sorry. Could we get a clarification on exactly what we're voting on? I'm, I'm a little confused now with the, with the explanation of the the new date, but still online. Clarification would be helpful.
As I, as I heard the motion, it was to change the date until our meeting of June eighth, two thousand and twenty. Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So what happens if the stay-at-home order is removed? And would it be possible then at the June eighth meeting to just have a regular public meeting? Where people can go to City Hall if it's open?
Mr. Goff, what are, what are, can you speak to our intentions about what we do when we open the city up?
That's hard to say, honestly, right now, Councilmember Hutchinson. I think it's, a lot of that's wait, wait to see what happens, what the governor puts out, what the president puts out. It's not going to be, once, once the, as even the caller mentioned, I think, once the stay-at-home order is released, that doesn't mean we just flip a switch and go back to normal. There's going to be a reentry that is going to be phased. And we actually are going to have a staff meeting on Wednesday to talk about that and on how we phase back in. You know, I, I think there's going to be a lot of, even if a stay-at-home order is released, I think there's still going to be a lot of people uncomfortable if there's still cases of COVID nineteen out there. So I think that's still going to hamper social gatherings. So it's, it's a hard question to answer right now. There, there isn't a specific, again, we're not just going to flip a switch and, and change everything back to normal.
Ms. Hutchinson.
So, Mr. Goff, my concern is that not everybody has a computer. Okay, and then they're not able to get the information. And there's even kids that don't have computers to do the schoolwork. So how are they, how is the public going to know when the public hearings are going to be out there if, you know, for example, they're not even able to leave their home? Even like tonight, we had one person call in. So that's not very much of public input. Is, and my concern is having as much public participation as we can. And it seems like there still is difficulty with getting in and I mean, I just don't think that these public hearings are an emergency. So that my concern is we still aren't reaching people. So for public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go to Mr. Stites and then Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will say, we got, half of us got elected, what, back in, back in November? This is the one topic that we've had the most feedback about since I was elected back in November. I would say we, we've had more feedback via phone conversations on, on here, via the Zoom interactive public hearing. And then on Weaver Speaks, we've had seven or eight or ten comments. We've had, like I said, more public feedback on this one issue than we have any other. So it's hard to say that we can't get people to give us feedback on it because we've gotten more than we have on anything else. I will say, though, that most of that feedback has been weight, so.
And there, there are, just, just so everybody knows, there's, there's eleven, I think, people on the call besides all of us here. So there's, there's, it's not just one caller. There's eleven people on right now.
So there's more people on this than a normal city council meeting on a normal Monday in person. So I would think that those avenues are getting out to people, and the, it seems like the same people who have issues have issues no matter what. So I guess my, my question is, are they not able to attend, or is this an excuse not to have the, the public hearing?
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my, my question is, if, if people didn't have a computer before and they were able to get the information, where were they getting the information? And is that not any longer available? Because if that's no longer available, then maybe we can figure out how to make that available. But if it was they didn't have a computer and they weren't getting the information, and they're still not getting the information, then I'm wondering if we have a gap. Although not particularly germane to this conversation, however, I that comment, however, I do want to say that I, I won't be voting for the amendment to change it to June eighth because change it to June eighth, and it says it's going to be a virtual public hearing, and we don't know if it'll be a virtual public hearing on June eighth or not. We do know that it would be a virtual public hearing on the twenty-seventh, and so I'll be voting no on this.
Thank you. Do we have additional questions? Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the concerns about a citizen's right to petition for a referendum, what are, can anybody clarify for me, what are the time constraints? So let's say we have the second hearing on the proposed April date, and it passes. And as Ms. Figless indicated, there would be intention to, you know, pursue a referendum. What are the, the time constraints for the citizens who wish to do that? So, you know, assuming that on, you know, April, I think the date was the twenty-seventh, we still have you know, several weeks, if not a month, under restricted social access. Would that actually work against a timeframe that they're limited by, or does it just push out their timeframe to pursue the referendum?
Mr. Dahl, would you like to address this?
Sure. The charter addresses that timeframe at Charter six point two. And, and says, says that anytime within forty-five days after final passage of an ordinance, that's when the petition is due. So if, for example, final passage of an ordinance is on June the 8th, you'd count 45 days after final passage.
Thank you. And just, uh, for clarification, I think, uh, Mr. Goff discussed this last week, but I had asked a question about what's the impact on the city for postponing some of these hearings? And is this item in particular the one that impacts the city's potential um, ability to pay back some, um, some debt that we're obliged by?
Um, potentially, uh, in any, any delay, um, and, and I'll preface this, I know I've been accused of, um, uh, playing favoritism to developers, which is, is not the case, um, but you know, we do have a property owner who is, is trying to get a project finished. We have a lot of tenants that are, um, in, in agreements um, for developments at the Clear Creek Crossing Project, Lutheran Hospital being one of them. Um, and any delay is, 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 causes, um, uh, issues with contracts and, and, and potential, uh, cost in money. Um, I wouldn't say this one potentially would, um, delay the city getting its money back for the hook ramps because, um, uh, other, other tenants out at Clear Creek Crossing Project would, but, um, they, Clear Creek Crossing and Evergreen would have to, um, push out the closing with Lutheran. And it does, it does slow down the amount of money that the developer gets from Lutheran, which in turn slows down it, when, um, they do issue their bonds. So there, there's a little bit of a relationship, I think, with this one, this whole team, but um, maybe not as directly as some of the other potential tenants that, uh, we're looking at coming out at Clear Creek Crossing. Sorry, I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions from council? Uh, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is, uh, for the city attorney, Jerry Dahl. Um, as it relates to that referendum process whereby the citizens have 45 days after the uh, final, uh, passage of the ordinance, is there a way to place in the language of the ordinance that the ordinance takes effect uh, one day after the governor's stay-at-home order is lifted? Thereby preserving the citizens' 45-day uh, ability to, you know, petition their fellow citizens after that stay-at-home order is lifted? Or does the ordinance have to be, uh, passed and effective, uh, you know, directly after that, uh, public hearing that we have virtually on the 27th?
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, that's a good question. The language of the charter is 45 days after final passage. I wanna look at it, my initial reaction is final passage is when you act. Very often, as you're well aware, the effective date of an ordinance is later. The final passage is when you pass it. Uh, my sense is that, that, I should do a little research, but, uh, you could probably on second reading, adjust language or insert language that dictated when the, the council determines the final passage of this ordinance. Voting tonight, but final passage shall take place on a date, or as you suggest, a a trigger date that's dependent upon the, the governor's action, but in no event later than some date. Do that for contracts and other things, and I think you could probably build language would, uh, address the date of final passage being declared by the council to be some date other than the, the date you're actually voting on. So I, I think that's something that could be constructed.
And then my second question is relating to the language and the setting of the public hearing. Is it a prerequisite that we define the location of the meeting, or is that the date that matters? Or do we have to have both a date and a location and geographic coordinates of where it is? Or, you know, what's the extent to which we can just say this meeting's gonna be held on this date? But not necessarily define its, uh, specific location or format?
Uh, I think for, for proper public notice, you need to tell people how they can show up. And in order to tell people how they can show up, you either say, here's the place and you can show up at that date and time and we'll be there. Or you say, uh, this will be a virtual meeting, here's how you can show up, here's the list. Uh, frankly, that's why I recommend that tonight's agenda items be continued. Because, uh, the, the notice, uh, was confusing around, or at least the newspaper notice said, show up in person, all the other notices frankly did describe it as virtual, but the newspaper notice in fairness said show up in person. So from a due process standpoint, I don't, uh, believe, and I think you'd appreciate that, you can't say there will be a public hearing on a certain date and stay tuned for us telling you later how to show up. When you're doing your notice, you, you need to show, you need to say that, and if it's gonna be virtual, has to be in the, in the notice.
And could we say, uh, both, but only do one? Or, so if we say that it's gonna be held in city council chambers and/or virtually as opposed to one or the other, is that viable? Or does it?
I, I have thought about that too, and I, I think not. Because, again, from the perspective of a person receiving the notice, um, they make plans around it. And if they find out too late that you've decided on door number two and they were planning on door number one, then you've denied them that opportunity. Uh, now, certainly, the city could, said, could put in a notice something like, this hearing will take place on a given date. And honor before, X days before the hearing, we will make clear whether the hearing will be in person or virtual. And we will let you know that. But that really is a second notice. And you think about it, and if you can do that second notice timely, then you can, you can buy a little time to make the choice. But I, I think the essence of your question is, can you make the choice kind of, kind of at the last minute, and the answer to that is no.
Okay, and then my final question is relating to the, the notice, the language of the notice, which indicates that uh, if a citizen wants to review the plans that are being considered under this public hearing, those plans are available for public inspection at City Hall? And if City Hall is closed, how are they to adequately obtain the ability to inspect those documents?
I see Ken Johnson's on the, the, the meeting, and I'll ask him to weigh in in a minute, but we'll make certain that the notice says how you achieve, how you can get access to the, to the, um, uh, to those materials, primarily online, which probably the vast majority of people will do anyhow and already do. Uh, but we'll indicate how, other ways you can receive it, so that it's clear that, that that's not the only way to get, uh, the, the documents that you need to review before the hearing. Ken, do you have anything to add on that?
Mr. Johnstone.
Thank you, Mayor, and Jerry. Um, y- yeah, certainly we're fully engaged as a, a department and a planning division, so, um, if anyone would want to reach out to us and uh, inquire about an alternative means of obtaining access to those plans, uh, physically through a remote connection at City Hall, um, my staff is coming in periodically, certainly to do certain things, and we could certainly accommodate something like that, uh, practicing appropriate social distancing.
Okay. Um, so I, I'll, I'll leave it at this, that my overarching concern is while our, our charter allows public hearings to occur in a certain format, it also requires referendums happen in a certain format and timeline. And my thought is that we really can't split the baby here and say, well, we're gonna do this, which we, but we can't allow the citizens to do this. And until we're able to determine how, uh, a referendum is able to be handled, it leaves our citizens in a lurch when we're passing ordinances and burning the timeline that they have available to, uh, efficiently, you know, uh, petition their government relating to that ordinance. Uh, that, that just seems woefully, you know, unfair to the residents. For, it, that, we can set aside the issue of the virtual meetings and whether people can participate in the virtual meetings and understand that i- it's likely in the year 2020, people can participate virtually in, in public meetings. I think the real critical aspect of it is the referendum aspect of asking people to pass around the same piece of paper to, you know, at 10% of the last, uh, election, uh, to get a petition signed. And the likelihood of that happening under the current environment is next to nothing. So, uh, th- that's my main concern is this referendum piece. And if we're gonna be allowed to pass ordinances, the citizens have to have that equal right to petition. And it just doesn't seem like they have that under the current circumstance. So I'd be reluctant to go forward with public hearings, given that concern. Thank you.
Is there, uh, Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnstone, how many people previous to this whole, uh, COVID-19 thing? How many people come in on a, on a basis of, of some of the hearings that have ha- been happening in the last year or so, um, to view documents in, uh, person versus downloading them on the web as they're available?
Uh, appreciate the question, um, Ms. Weaver. Um, couldn't give you an, any kind of an absolute answer, but
Sure.
You know, I'd say the number of people that come in to look at plans, uh, is probably smaller than the number of people that actually, you know, show up at a public hearing, whether that be a virtual hearing or an in-person hearing. But, uh, that's typically how people participate. Uh, not a lot of people coming in to look at plans.
And I love all the howling in the background.
Yeah.
It's about 8 o'clock.
It's 8 o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Johnstone, I appreciate that.
And that might be coming from my phone, I apologize.
I, it might be coming from over here, too. I just wanted to say that I, I will not be voting for this. I, I do agree with both, uh, Ms. Hoppe and Mr. Stites regarding the access. Um, I've seen more access with this, uh, particular, uh, meeting tonight, um, on Wheat Ridge Speaks, which is fantastic. And I also wanted to just thank everybody for their comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks. Um, it, it's, it's really pretty neat to see the, the, the access that it has allowed. Um, you know, all different kinds of comments. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Johnstone, for answering that.
Thank you. Is there, uh, additional discussion on the amendment? Uh, Ms. Hoppe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to double check with, um, uh, Mr. Dahl, because I had written down that the critical government functions exempts petitioning. And so I just wanna make sure that I understood that correctly, that people can still petition currently.
Uh, yes, the, the governor's order isn't a model of clarity around that, I'll say. And that's why we're up to the Fourth Amendment amended order. I'll bet there's a new one every week, and I, I don't fault the governor for, for that. Uh, as different questions come up, the, the order gets refined. This might get refined too, but right now, the governor's order exempts activities related to federal, state, and local elections, including any required acts of a political party provided social distancing requirements are observed to the greatest degree possible. And I'll say that that doesn't specifically say initiative or referendum. Instead, it says related to federal, state, and local elections. So I networked that around to the city attorney's listserv, and the unanimous sense of the body was, that's an election matter. And then I went to, to information that, that the governor and secretary of state of some of their statements and information I got from CML. And the, the report I got from that was, yes, this is intended in the governor's order to, to include petitioning. Let the governor and the secretary of state recognize some of the challenges around that in a social distancing environment, and they're thinking about it. Uh, but they haven't done anything yet. So the answer is, yes, I believe the order applies, and that's the general view. There are obstacles to exercising that exemption. Uh, but until the governor and secretary of state do something about those obstacles, it's, it's, uh, still available, but perhaps more difficult. Sorry for that less than definitive answer, but that's, that's exactly what I've been able to learn. That's, I think, what it says.
Thank you. Uh, any additional discussion on the amendment? Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, two things, um, I'm in agreement with everybody that commented about how this has been, um, a great experiment in engagement and, um, having people, um, participate in, um, Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge Speaks and, um, also utilizing this new technology. I do think that it's important, though, that we also bring along everybody who's, who's been with us um, before too. And, um, I think that, um, it's probably a good idea for us to explore like robocalls or other means of outreach to, to landlines and people who might not, um, necessarily have access to computers. Um, in addition to the newspapers and how things are public, publicly noticed. Um, just to up, up it, um, in terms of, um, how we're outreach to folks. Um, so that's just one thing I wanted to add in. And then the other thing was, um, I know we talked a lot about location, but is it necessary if we are going to do a con, uh, a continuation that we have to have a specific date? I'm just wondering why June 8th? Or can you say something, um, like once the, um, you know, shelter-in-place ordinance is lifted? Or does that mean that we never, we, yeah?
Mr. Dahl, you raised your hand.
Thanks, uh, no, when you have a public hearing set, set it out a date. And it's not uncommon at all to continue public hearings and, and continuing to, perhaps you get plenty of testimony, and it's midnight and you wanna continue to a another date, but you always continue it or set it to a date certain. Because that's the notice that people have. And, uh, if, if you say, it's continued until we tell you later, then, uh, you, you know, that's not properly continuing the public hearing. There's nothing wrong with, and it does happen out there, that there's a second continuance because of events. So in the event, it comes up late May, and it's clear, if this motion passes, the amendment passes and it's June, and motion passes, and it comes up late May, second meeting in May, that there's gonna be a problem. Council has the same tools it's using tonight, think about it, uh, to, uh, to set it out again, yet, again, and they have those, those tools available to you. And in this environment, you're probably gonna have to use some of those tools. Because this is clear from all of us here, we're not sure what will happen, and you do your best tonight. If turns out events are such that, that you need to do your best again in a different way in a month, you have the right to do that, and, and we'll certainly give you the, uh, appropriate motions for it.
Uh, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I just kinda wanted to give a little input as far as, uh, being a city council member, yes, I would like to see us continue business as usual as much as possible. Um, and I do believe that we've increased engagement by way of virtual meetings, um, Wheat Ridge Speaks. So that's really not as much my issue as much as the potential petition process, um, and a referendum as has been stated. And as much as I would not like for that threat, um, to weigh on, on this decision, I also know that when I was running for, uh, and campaigning my petition to get onto the ballot, I was knocking on doors and asking my neighbors face-to-face to sign a piece of paper to allow me to be on the ballot. And so I do not want, I, I keep hearing difficult and challenging as far as the referendum process or the petition process. And I do not want to, um, limit any powers of the people and, and limit rights for their access, not, not just virtually into meetings, but through their, their power of petition, which is something that I think is really important for the people to exercise when necessary, um, and at their will. So as much as I would like for us to continue, uh, business as usual, it's, it's truly not. And whether it's June 8th or until we're able to meet in person, I feel like the people have the right to a public hearing where they can come and speak. They can see us face-to-face, they can, um, potentially petition if, if they so wish. So I, I would agree with this amendment, and I, I hope that we meet in person sooner rather than later. So we can continue business as usual, but this is unprecedented circumstances. And I, I think that we're gonna have to address this a, as, as the situation continues to evolve. Thank you.
Additional discussion on the amendment, uh, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna make a comment about Wheat Ridge Speaks because I do appreciate that, um, platform. But what I see also about Wheat Ridge Speaks, I think it should be called Wheat Ridge Speaks and others also. There are comments from people that don't even live in Wheat Ridge, and it makes me wonder- There are comments from people that don't even live in Wheat Ridge, and it makes me wonder, what is the interest? Why are you so interested in what's going on in Wheat Ridge? They move away, and then they make a comment. If it was so great, why did you move? So it's just not Wheat Ridge Speaks, it's other people from other places that also comment on that forum. And I take that into, you know, consideration when I'm reading that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the amendment? Ms. Weaver.
I just want to clarify that at a public meeting, anyone is allowed to come speak. And when we do meet in person, anyone, not just from Wheat Ridge, is allowed to come speak. And so Wheat Ridge Speaks is the same as a public meeting that way. And, and I also just want to say as well that Wheat Ridge Speaks is listing comments as public comment, as if people were standing up here and saying, and I just wanted to reiterate that, that, that the rules are no different than if we were meeting in person. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Additional discussion. I'll go to Ms. Hulteen and then come back to Ms. Hutchinson.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Urban's suggestion about being able to move forward with the hearing, but have the, the implementation of it for a date that is after the stay-at-home order is lifted. And can Mr. Dahl provide some guidance on how we would pursue that option? Because I believe that the options that are available to people now are, allow for pretty robust citizen input. They can call, they can email, they can use Wheat Ridge Speaks. So I, I appreciate the idea of moving forward, so there's some amount of predictability in our government. But the idea of being able to initiate a referendum process at a time when social access is, is an option for people interested in a referendum, so they're not having to make a public health choice around their own safety versus their own civic rights is also really important. So regarding Mr. Urban's suggestion, what, what could we do to actually include that as part of this conversation?
Mr. Dahl?
Well, I think, thank you. I, I think what could be done there is adjusting the motion, the approval motion on second reading, such that you had an alternative motion or a language in the motion to actually dictate what the date of passage is declared to be. And as came up in the dialogue I had with Councilmember Urban, it's the date of passage that's the trigger for the 45-day referendum signature collection process. So if on the date of a passage, you, or on the, on the day you met at second reading, you determined that you'd like the date of passage to be 30 days later, then that would be something I think we could build into the second reading approval motion. It's not anything I think that you need to structure now. It's kind of a new concept, and I'm happy to kind of work, work up alternative motions so that you have those in the packet for the second reading. And, and you can look around and see what the facts of life are on second reading, because they'll be different than they are today, and they'll different than they are yesterday, and determine whether that's a tool you want to use, and if it is, how, how long to set it out. That's, that's, I think mechanically how to do it, and I promise you I'll be prepared with alternative motions for you on second reading if, if you express interest in that.
Thank you. I have Ms. Hutchinson, Ms. Hoppy, and Ms. Dozeman in that order. Ms. Hutchinson.
I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you. So I just wanted to then clarify what I just heard, which was if we continue this hearing to April 27th, and we do the second reading on the 27th and do the public hearing, and open the public hearing, and approval motion at the end of that hearing could include that there would be the date of passage, we, we could just, we could say the date of passage is 30 days from now or, or whatever in that. Therefore, at that point, that reserves the, the 45 days for a referendum. But it also gives the project owners the opportunity to move forward with finding their tenants and, and getting their bonds and things like that. Is that correct?
Yes. At whatever date you end up doing second reading, whether it's the 27th or the 8th, if the amendment passes, amendment doesn't pass, then you're back to the 27th. I'd have those motions available for you to trigger what the, the passage date was. Obviously, anytime an ordinance is passed, it's going to be subject to referendum. Development community or whoever's the proponent can choose to take the risk or not of going ahead in the face of the fact there might be a referendum. That's just the landscape that they're, everyone's familiar with. But that's, that's my answer. Whatever date you end up doing second reading, you can have the available motions to set the date of passage.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. Hoppy basically just asked my question. So it allowing for a passage to be 30 days out wouldn't necessarily delay anything as far as the, the development and that moving forward. It would just change the date for the referendum?
Yeah, so we change the date for triggering the start of the referendum signature collection process. I can't speak for various property developers on these three hearings to see if, how they would feel about the risk. And you always have risk, even if the date of passage is the date of second reading, let's say, then there's still a 45-day period where there's a risk. And if you added 30 days to that, then there's just a 75-day period where if I'm the proponent, I have risk. And it's a matter of how I feel about evaluating that risk, and that's, that's outside of my wheelhouse, other than to tell you that's something that they will think about. But they're used to thinking about it, so that's familiar territory.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question to Mr. Dahl, and that would be if we say we, we don't pass the amendment, we have the meeting on the 27th, we say we're gonna, it's, it passes 30 days from that, and then the stay-at-home order isn't lifted 30 days from that, so we're talking about beginning of June, and it still hasn't been lifted. Is there a way to then word the motion so it's the, it passes as soon as the stay-at-home order is lifted, or does it have to be a set date?
Yeah. I'll, I'll tell you, that's, that's a hard one for me to answer. It's a series of kind of constitutional questions that, you know, I feel them as I get them, but that's one that, that I really would want to explore carefully. I, I am concerned about that. In other words, once you've said, here's where the date of passage is, that's, that's, I think, a hard date. I don't think you'd be able to go back and change that. You can always do a reconsideration at that or the next meeting, but at 30 days out, you're past that, that timeframe. And, and at some time, at some point, there has to be finality. As regards the question of can we say that the date of passage is a date dependent upon someone else? We don't know yet, i.e. the governor lifting the order. I'm not confident about that because it doesn't signal to, to, it, it, I think it delegates your, your, your decision-making authority and, and, and I, I'm, I'm more comfortable saying that data passage is 30 days from tonight because that's something that you set. I'm happy to do some research, but on, on that one, I think I'm going to have to because it's a constitutional right that, that I think needs to be dealt with in a real specific way, and I have some real doubt about or concern about setting the trigger point for a constitutional right based upon actions taken by others over which you have no control. I understand why you would want to do it, and I appreciate Councilmember Urban suggesting it. It might work, but there's going to have to be case law that helps support me on that, and I'm going to have to look.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dahl, can we, so if, if there is new information on exactly what you're talking about on the 27th, can it be continued again based on, on any new information or not new information?
Sure. Counsel continues public hearings, you know, regularly.
So there's no limit, there's no limit if we need to continue again?
No, no. Hearings can get continued, you know, frequently and repetitively. The answer is no, you can continue.
Okay. So, so I just want to, I just want to clarify. So if in, on the 27th, we still don't have an answer to this question, it's still an issue of, of can people meet together for referendum? We can continue it and make the same set of decisions that we're discussing tonight in, in two weeks or whatever it is?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, the amended motion is to change the date in the motion from April 27, 2020, to June 8, 2020. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
I see four votes aye.
All those opposed to the motion?
I see four votes nay. Mr. Mayor, the option to break the tie.
I'm going to vote nay.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has failed by a vote of five to four.
Thank you. We will go back to the original motion. Is there discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Yes.
Thank you. I see seven aye votes. Okay, all those opposed to the motion, raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed by a vote of seven to one, with Ms. Hutchinson voting no.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number three. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 06-2020, An Ordinance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at 9800 West 38th Avenue from Residential 1 R1 to Planned Residential Development (PRD) with an Outline Development Plan (ODP). This is case number WZ-19-07/HEARDI. The issue is the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Residential 1 to Planned Residential Development with an Outline Development Plan for the property located at 9800 West 38th Avenue, southeast corner of 38th and Johnson. The purpose of this request is to prepare the property for the development of four single-family homes and three duplexes for a total of 10 dwelling units.
Thank you. This is a, an ordinance on second reading for a public hearing, quasi-judicial. This was noticed in our first reading as being a meeting that would be occurring at our city council chambers in person. That is not possible at this time, and there is a motion. I will ask Ms. Weaver to provide us a motion to continue this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to continue agenda item number three, Council Bill Number 06-2020, An Ordinance Approving Rezoning of Property Located at 9800 West 38th Avenue from Residential 1 to Planned Residential Development with an Outline Development Plan, Case Number WZ-19-07/HEARDI, Including the Public Hearing to April 27, 2020, at 7:00 PM as a virtual public hearing and direct staff to provide all required public notice of such continuance and include necessary information for the public to be aware of the various virtual means of participating in said public hearing.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Do we have discussion on the motion, and I will recognize Ms. Hutchinson?
Mr. Mayor, I have a second amendment to change the date of the public hearing to June 8th, City Council meeting. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to change the date from June the, or, excuse me, April the 27th to June the 8th. Is there discussion on the amendment? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the, the somewhat applies to the previous item that we just discussed, but my understanding is that in Section 26-109, under the public hearing notice, it says the posted notice at least 15 days prior to any public hearing for a specific site development. Or may not, which requires approval by the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment or City Council. And so are we going to be able to notice these properties within 15 days for the hearing on the 27th?
Mr. Goff?
Yes, we, as long as we get it in the transcript by this Thursday, they would be, that would be 15 days. Let's see. I'm just counting the calendar here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. The 15th day from tomorrow would be the 28th of April. Well, I thought the, Mr. Dahl, I thought, or maybe Ken. I know staff looked at that to see if we could, we could notice this in time, and I was told we could, so I'll let Mr. Johnstone or Mr. Dahl speak to that.
Well, Mr. Johnson's looking. I, and I'm happy to dial to 26109, the notice hearing, notice of hearing section in the code. We did prepare a draft notice that we were ready for, for tonight, whatever date the council chose. And we asked the transcript to reserve room. Now, they have a backup date, or you have to submit stuff to the transcript a certain amount of time before publication date. And we've kind of got a reservation in for that. And we're kind of ready to finalize the notice depending on what date the council chose here tonight. Ken? If it's 15 days, that math doesn't allow it. Ken, is there something I'm missing?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have 26109 in front of me, but I believe the 15 days applies to the, the noticing of adjacent property owners, which has already been provided. And the 10, a 10-day notice is required for the publication of the transcript or whatever publication you choose to, to, to use, but we use typically the transcript.
Yep, the, it's item number C under Section 1, Section 26-109. So Section B talks about published notice, but then the posted notice is Section C.
Yeah, and the, the posted notice has also been correctly advertised on the property within the 15-day timeframe. It's already, it, it exists. But it's not the posted notice as adopted by city council, is what we're doing right now. What, what you're considering doing right now is continuing it to a date certain. So the, the hearing tonight has been properly posted and properly published, or not published, but notified to the adjacent property owners within that 15-day timeframe, and we'd be continuing to a date certain. So those deadlines would remain intact with whatever date council chooses tonight. The issue at hand is the publication was not properly notified for the virtual format, so that's what we need to cure. And as I understand it, that has a 10-day publication requirement, which can be met with publication communicated to the transcript tonight or early tomorrow for publication in Thursday's paper.
I'm, I'm just reading the language of the item, and it says at least 15 days prior to any public hearing. And we would have to, nobody knows at this point that there's a public hearing on the 27th, and we're within the 15-day period. So in my mind, that would mean that we have to have a posted notice on the property for 15 days prior to any public hearing. Not, I mean, the posted notice has to have the date and time of the hearing, otherwise it makes no sense.
it makes no sense to have a notice up there. But I, I, I guess I'd just say, and maybe have Jerry jump in here, but, uh, for the purpose of there's, there's obviously three important and very different, uh, ways that we notify people of public hearings on land use applications. One is the mailing to adjacent property owners, one is the posting of the property, and one is publication in a newspaper of, of local circulation. Uh, the first two, uh, we've properly posted for, or accomplished for this evening. Uh, and whatever, so those people who've been notified in that, uh, venue are, are aware of tonight's meeting and, and are aware of what any continuance council might take uh, through notification of, of this meeting, which has been properly served. The only notification that hasn't been properly served is the publication. Uh, that publication, uh, will be accomplished after this meeting at whatever, for whatever date council chooses. Uh, and that can be accomplished within that ten-day requirement for whatever date we choose, whether it be the twenty-seventh or some, some later date.
I guess what Councilmember Urban is asking Ken is, what was on the posted notice that was out on the property? And that was our tonight's meeting?
Correct.
So, so the, and that's been out for fifteen days?
Yes. So, um, but the, the posted notice for tonight's meeting as adopted by City Council indicated that it was to be in City Council chambers. And we've had this meeting, this meeting is ongoing. We are discussing a separate and distinct public hearing to, to be occurring on the twenty-seventh of April. There is no public notice on any property in the city indicating a public hearing on the twenty-seventh of April. Again, the posted notice has been accomplished within fifteen days for tonight's meeting. But not for the meeting on the twenty-seventh. And it says in the S- Section C that the, uh, upon the parcel for consideration for approval, which provides notice of the kind of action requested, the hearing authority, the time, date, and location of hearing, and the location of the parcel and a consideration by address or approximate address, the sign shall be posted within the property value, and goes on from there. So it add, it, it indicates that that, the posted notice must include the date, time, and location of hearing, which we don't have yet because we're still voting on it. Which is tonight's meeting and the importance of, as, as Jerry has advised, of continuing to a date certain. So the people that have been, uh, informed of this public hearing uh, for tonight's meeting within that fifteen-day timeframe, uh, either are choosing to attend or not attend, uh, tonight's meeting, but they are being advised as to whatever future date that public hearing might be continued to by either choosing to or not to, uh, attend and participate in this meeting. But I, I think that would only be correct if we opened the public hearing, but we have not opened the public hearing, so the hearing has not occurred today.
That's, that's correct, you hear it. Agenda item is being continued. And that, as you know, uh, allows the opportunity for protests to be, um, filed prior to the court start of the public hearing. Uh, the, I guess the issue is, there is no way, and there would never would have been a way, for the post, the posted sign out there until tonight, to say anything other than April thirteenth. It would be an absolute impossibility for the sign to say anything other than April thirteenth, and it says April thirteenth. It can't say April twenty-seven because, or the eighth or whatever date council picks, because the council hasn't picked a date yet. Uh, so I, I think that, that the, the, um, uh, certainly if council picks a date, the signs will get changed. But to, to say that the council can't ever continue a hearing or continue an agenda item until it, it's made based upon a sign that was previously up in full compliance with the date that you had previously chosen. I, I guess I have difficulty understanding that. I also noticed that that same section uh, gives the council, it says that fact that it wasn't continuously posted the full fifteen days may not at the discretion of the hearing authority, which is this council. Constitute grounds for continuance for the applicant show that a good faith effort to meet this posting requirement was made. Now, that isn't written specifically with our rather unusual fact pattern here in mind. But I'm, I'm, I'm try, kind of struggling with the physical impossibility of that posted notice out there needing to say April twenty-seven before you know that it's going to be April twenty-seven. This is as soon as you know that it is.
Thank you. Uh, I have in order, uh, Ms. Nosler Beck, Ms. Hoppy, and Ms. Dozeman. Ms. Nosler Beck?
I'm gonna pass.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Hoppy.
Sorry, I was having trouble there. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I just want to clarify what, um, what I just heard Mr. Dahl say, that because it has already been properly posted for the proper amount of time, um, as council, we can, um, continue this item. Is that correct, Mr. Dahl?
Yes. I would ask that as a part of your motion, you direct that the posted signs be, uh, uh, be, you know, adjusted to reflect the new date, whatever date you pick.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So along those same lines, uh, in previous, uh, continuances of, of, uh, public hearing, is there a minimum requirement of fifteen days to have had that posted sign changed? Or is it just a matter of however long it is until the continued public hearing? Mr. Dahl?
Well, if, if it were sort of a straight continuance, you could continue to the next day. Ken Johnson's point is a good one. People knew that tonight was going to be the date. And to the extent, uh, you change that date, they're watching tonight, or they're aware of tonight's activities, and and, uh, there is a difference, of course, between continuing the agenda item and continuing the hearing. You're continuing the agenda item frankly in order to protect uh, protest rights, and that's important, and I understand that and support that. Uh, I don't think that that prevents you from saying that, okay, here's the new date, and let's make sure all the notices say the new date. The issue is kind of some sort of basic due process. Do people know when the next date is? And what efforts do we make? And are they complete? And are they substantially complete such that the people know? And, and the efforts you'll make, no matter what date you pick, will be complete and people will know. There's a hard edge, if the hearing got opened, that Councilmember Urban had pointed out to me before tonight's meeting, which is that the hearing got open, then that is the deadline for filing a protest. And, uh, as a result, my suggestion was you continue the whole agenda item, preserve those rights, and I feel that's important, because that's a hard edge. Opening the hearing shuts off protest drives. We're talking now about one of the three methods of notice. And are you effectively making sure the community out there knows when the new date is? And for that reason, I think that you can decide tonight that the new date is whatever date you pick. And make sure certainly the published notice gets, gets done, and the signs get changed. Whatever it is you pick.
Additional discussion on the amendment? I don't see any more, uh, discussion on the amendment. The amendment is to change the date from, uh, April twenty-seventh to June eighth. All, uh, councilors in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All voting nay, please raise your hand.
I mess up Miss Counsel, Mr. Mayor, because I have a vote of four to three. Did anyone abstain?
Let's try the vote again. All those in favor of them, of the amendment?
Ms. Nosler Beck's hand had disappeared into her bookshelf. It's, thank you. All those opposed? Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed to, the amendment has passed five to three.
Okay, we will go back to the main motion. Uh, is there discussion on the main motion?
I would, um,
Mr. Urban?
Uh, I appreciate the vote on that, and I, I would continue to, um, uh, raise the issue of the fifteen-day notice and would ask for further thought and consideration of, uh, this fifteen-day notice requirement, and, uh, I respect Ken Johnson's opinion, but I disagree, uh, that it has been noticed properly.
Any other discussion on the main motion? All right, we will poll the council. All those in favor of the main motion, please raise your hand.
Thank you. Opposed? Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed by a vote of seven to one.
Okay, thank you very much. We will, um, go to Agenda Item Number Four. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce Agenda Item Number Four?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Council Bill Number Zero-Six dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance vacating any interest held by the city in a portion of Young Field Service Road, a public roadway. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge holds rights of way and trust for the public. A portion of right-of-way row at the north end of Young Field Service Road, located on the west side of Interstate seventy, has been deemed to be unnecessary by the Engineering Division and is proposed to be vacated.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not, it is not quasi-judicial. Uh, this, uh, arises because of the, um, stay-at-home order and the fact that our, uh, we have noticed this prior, that the, that the meeting would be in our city council chambers, and it is not, so, um, this is a, uh, to change the date of the public hearing. Um, Ms., um, Nosler Beck, may I have a motion on this item?
Sure. I move to continue Agenda Item Number Four, Council Bill Number Zero-Six dash twenty-twenty, an ordinance vacating any interest held by the city in a portion of Young Field Service Road, a public roadway, including the public hearing to April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, at seven P.M. as a virtual public hearing and direct staff to provide all required public notice of such continuance and include necessary information for the public to be aware of the various virtual means of participating in said public hearing.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion, and who is the second, please? Ms. Hoppy? Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? I don't see any discussion. We will, uh, move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Thank you. Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, the motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number Five. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I actually have a, a change, so I'll read the issue, and then, um, we have a little bit of a change to the recommended motion. Resolution Number Twenty-dash-twenty-twenty, a resolution of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Jefferson County School District concerning the Color Strand Elementary School Playground and in connection therewith, a grant agreement with Great Outdoors Colorado. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge recently was awarded a grant through the Great Outdoors Colorado Schoolyard Initiative in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the playground project at Color Strand Elementary School. The schoolyard initiative program is designed to inspire more active physical play and enhance outdoor learning on school grounds.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this issue?
Um, we do. We have, uh, Carol O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec, uh, Director, is on, on the line, and she'll give it just a brief summary again of what this is and, um, explanation of um, why we're asking for an amended motion this evening.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, councilors. Nice to see you all this evening. Um, as you may recall, um, I came to council on November twenty-fifth to ask for support for this GoCo School Yard Initiative, and we had students from Color Strand Elementary that spoke with you all. Um, and as mentioned, we were successful in, um, receiving this grant in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And I just want to say kudos to our Grant and Special Project Administrator, um, Brandon Altenberg, who's new to that position and has done a fantastic job so far. So tonight, um, we have the IGA with Jefferson County School District uh, for approval, as well as the grant agreement with GoCo. And these items detail the responsibilities of both parties involved. And the IGA has the correct language, however, the grant agreement, there's one, um, piece that we would like to amend, and we've reached out to GoCo and have not heard back from them yet, but that particular piece is, um, not, Sections nine A, ten, and eleven, and that basically in the grant agreement would, it states that the city is responsible for the long-term maintenance and insurance of that playground, and that's not what we've agreed to. We'd like the, the school district, and that's the language in the IGA states that the school district will maintain and ensure that property. So we're just looking to, uh, for your approval essentially under the condition that Sections nine A, ten, and eleven are amended, um, to the approval of our city attorney.
Thank you, um. Thank you for that staff presentation. Um, before we go to questions of council, I would like to open this up to the public for any, uh, questions that you may have. If you are a member of the public and would like to, uh, speak on Agenda Item Number Five, I will entertain those comments now. Uh, if you, uh, would like to speak and are a member of the public, would you please, uh, so indicate at this time, and I will recognize you to speak. Do I have any members in the public who would like to speak on this item? We'll ask one more time. I don't hear anyone, but once again, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on Agenda Item Number Five? If so, please, uh, speak up now, and I will recognize you to speak. I don't hear anyone, uh, requesting to speak, so I will close the public comment portion on this item and open it for, uh, questions of council, of staff. Is there, do any of our councilors have questions on this item? Please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Okay, it looks like we don't have any questions. Uh, Ms. Dozeman, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number Twenty-dash-twenty-twenty, a resolution of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Jefferson County School District concerning the Color Strand Elementary School Playground and in connection therewith, a grant agreement with Great Outdoors Colorado. The intergovernmental agreement between the city and Jefferson County School District attached here to as Exhibit A, and the grant agreement between the city and Great Outdoors Colorado attached here to as Exhibit B are hereby approved, and the mayor and city clerk hereby authorized and directed to execute the same conditioned upon deletion or amendment of the provisions of grant agreement, including specifically for drafts nine A, operation and maintenance, ten, public access, and eleven, insurance, and a form approved by the city attorney to recognize that the city is not the owner of the property and does not have continuing responsibilities following project construction.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Uh, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh, we will move to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and the clerk will count the mo, count the votes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We have, um, uh, we have deleted Agenda Item Number Six from our agenda tonight, so that completes our, uh, business portion of the meeting. I would like to move now to a City Managers Matters and, uh, go to Mr. Goff, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want, uh, item this evening, um, back on March thirteenth, you remember, City Council, uh, back on March thirteenth, you remember, city council uh, postponed or or delayed, canceled our uh, council retreat. Um, the direction at that time was to uh, work with our facilitator on some additional dates in the future. Um, we did have um, three dates that uh, the facilitator provided to us, um, all in May. And um, Denita did a a poll of city council and the only the only dates that work for the entirety of the city council right now are Friday, May eighth and and Saturday, May ninth. And that might be a little soon, um, based on all the discussion we had this evening with with the uncertainty of COVID and and when we're going to be able to sit next to each other. So um, just want a little bit of direction from city council on if if you want to look at later dates into June. Um, or um, or or what, or anything else that you may have thoughts on the council retreat.
Discussion on the council retreat, councilors. Uh, Hutchinson?
On mute.
Sorry.
Okay, I would go for June. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Uh, Ms. Hoppy?
Um, I agree that the May eighth date is a little too soon. Um, and if the other May dates that were offered are unavailable for everybody, then I am okay with going to June. I know that we wanted to try to get this work done so that um, we could have some um, information moving into budget season. Um, so so I don't know if we move to June, if that's going to still give us enough time or not, but um, I would hope that if we do move it to June, that we try real hard to make sure we get a date that works.
Uh, Mr. Urban?
Uh, I would be okay with June and if we had to have a a mini virtual retreat uh, in May as well to get things kicked off, I'd be fine with that as well. But I I would agree, it's more productive to do this kind of work in person. Um, so I'd be okay with June and maybe a, you know, three hour session in May uh, to get things going.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so as as much as I would like to have a retreat, I think that maybe waiting until um, we can better understand the financial impact of on the city after addressing the coronavirus and and kind of seeing where the the chips have fallen after everything starts to kind of phase into reopening would probably be a better choice.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Now, Ms. Hoppy?
I do just want to bring up two things. Uh, Memorial Day weekend is the end of May, so if we do decide to do something virtual, if we could skip that holiday probably. Um, and then um, I I completely understand what Ms. Dozeman's saying about, you know, wanting to know where we stand financially. Um, but I think it's important that if we have a super tight budget, that we want to know what our priorities are to be able to to um, be able to prioritize that tight budget. And so I think part of the retreat helps guide us in that information on what if we do have, I mean, of course, we have our basic needs that we have to meet and you know, of course, our our police department is our our largest budget item and um, if it's, you get at this or that, I feel like it it would be important if we had um, if if we had conversations around what we think is more important, this or that. Um, not that it's going to be that dire, but you know, I completely understand what Ms. Dozeman's saying. I just think it's maybe important to have those conversations so that when it comes to time to have to trim the fat, we we know where we want to trim that.
Thank you. Additional discussion and advice for Mr. Goff? Well, Mr. Goff, you got the answers you got. Hope that uh, provides clarity?
We'll, we'll start with that. Thank you. That's it.
Does that conclude your report?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to uh, City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing further tonight unless you have questions.
Thank you so much. Um, we will go to Elected Officials Matters and I will start with our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick. You're on mute. There you go.
Yeah, I'm sitting here punching the thing. It's not working. I I just wanted to uh, thank the staff again for the unbelievable effort they're putting out across all departments. Obviously, the PD is doing an amazing job uh, under very trying and risky circumstances. And the rest of the staff has formed a collaborative effort, working as a solid team. And I believe the staff should be recognized for that. And I thank them. Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I would like to uh, go to our treasurer. I think he's on here. Mr. Miller?
Uh, yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. Um, I don't have anything uh, for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, we will go down the list of our our councilors and I will start with Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, and uh, just wanted to echo um, what Steve said. Thanks, everyone, for all of your hard work. Um, and showing up and showing up for work um, during these times. Um, I know it's really stressful for for everyone. Um, and just a friendly reminder to wear a mask if you're if you're going out in public. Um, it's to protect yourself and to protect the person standing next to you. And it's the best thing that you can do for your community right now. Um, it's how, it's how you can show that that you're proud of the community that we live in, um, by protecting yourself and by protecting others. So, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to continue that thanks not only to our staff, but also our community for engaging um, in the virtual meetings on Wheat Ridge Speaks uh, as well as our business community, our healthcare professionals. I I really have just enjoyed seeing all the stories on Facebook um, of of everybody, you know, banding together and and really helping each other and supporting each other in these times, whether it be picking up groceries for your neighbor or uh, you know, a a community member asking for a a certain item or or help from others. Like I I see, you know, dozens of people stepping up and and helping each other and and I just am really grateful for our community and I love Wheat Ridge and it's part of what makes Wheat Ridge wonderful. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just, I'll echo what uh, Val and Leah said. I I feel like our first responders and our staff are doing awesome. I had the opportunity to jump in on a couple of the virtual um, practice meetings that you guys did this week as a staff and and Mr. Mayor and uh, Mr. Kirkpatrick uh, were were part of that and um, those were pretty entertaining. Um, Councilmember O'Donnell, I see you on here. You you were awesome. Um, all of you guys did a great job. So um, thank you to the staff for for stepping up and doing that and hopefully our citizens take advantage of that and really learn how to use this platform because it doesn't look like it's going away anytime soon. So, thank you.
Thank you. We will go to Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just wanted to uh, uh, echo all the thank yous and I also just want to thank all of the the great uh, grocery store workers and everyone who is selling food and being out there uh, for us all. Um, it's it's a risk. So so thanks to everybody who who helps with all of those essential services. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. We'll go to this whole team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I of course echo everyone else's appreciation for city staff and our frontline responders and and the people in the grocery store. Um, I have I have two things. One is just a reminder that uh, the social distancing is in effect in our parks. I know that the city's messaged that a lot, but I received a couple complaints over the weekend from people concerned about pickup soccer games that um, were taking place. And so just reminding people that uh, that social distancing order is is in place for good reason and and uh, should be respected by everybody. Um, and then I'd like to uh, propose a topic for a study session at a later date. Last last week when we had our study session and we're discussing Airbnb hosts and didn't have any um, hosts participate in it, I reached out to a few and and they mentioned that they just increasingly feel like since they're technically not legal, they felt like they couldn't come and were worried about expressing their opinions. So I would like us as a council to evaluate options to provide some protections or amnesty for for people who are subjected to policy items that are in discussion. Um, we've got things coming up in the next year or two around ADUs and other people who um, I think their voices are really important and in our civic process and um, if we're going to pass policies that really are good for the community, we need to make sure that we've got some protections in place. Uh, so if I have a second for that, I'd really like to make sure that we we take a look at that.
I'll second that.
Okay, looks like you've got two on that.
Uh, I would say that Councilmember Dozeman and I have requested this item on the ADUs for over two years now and it's remained stagnant on the future agenda items. So it would be somewhat unfair for this to go forward without that discussion to go for for it because it's on the exact same item and I don't understand why it's been so uh, stagnant.
Ms. Hoppy?
Yeah, I would say because when it got put on the list, it was just asking for a state of enforcement against illegal ADUs, which has happened. There has been a state of enforcement against illegal illegal ADUs. So um, if there's something more specific, the reason why it stays on there is because the ADU conversation hasn't come up, but if there's something more specific than state of enforcement, I can it says state of enforcement with regard to accessory dwelling units. So if there's something more specific other than please leave these people alone, then if you could get that information to me, I'd be happy to pass that on to staff and get that moving forward. Um, you know, there are, I would like to say there are some things on the future agenda items that um, councilors have put on and um, I, you know, when you put something on a a study session, you have to give some sort of direction on how you want that to go. I mean, like I personally have something on there about fuller access ordinance. I haven't I haven't given any further, like this is what I was talking about or this is what I would like to see you discuss. And so, you know, it still is that sitting there on the agenda items, but if you have things on the future agenda items with your name next to it and you're wondering why it's not going anywhere, um, maybe reach out and see if it's because we need more information from you.
Uh, Ms. Dozeman, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So uh, Councilmember Nosler Beck and I had also expanded on that after she had been elected about um, amnesty for addition accessory dwelling units that are currently in the city. So um, just, we can take this offline uh, Janice, and just let me know whatever you need from me and and I'll get that to you. Thank you.
And if if you don't mind, I just would like to clarify. I just use that as an example. This would be looking at what type of protections we could put into place for people with any type of um, who are infected, affected, not infected uh, um, by a policy discussion, just so that we can um, provide, you know, we can evoke a specific amnesty clause or something like that, so that people feel like they can come forward and participate in the policy setting process. So I used ADUs as an example, but this is not specific to ADUs and I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give everybody an update on the Business Stabilization Program. We currently have uh, seven members on a committee that will be reviewing the applicant submissions, which we have a set deadline for noon this coming Friday. Uh, the committee will be meeting on next Tuesday to review the applicants and we hope to have decisions made shortly thereafter, depending on if we have any additional questions for the applicants. And uh, we're meeting with the city attorney this week to make sure that our review process and everything is above board and transparent. And uh, right now, I believe we have fifty-five applicants uh, for the program. So continue to encourage those business owners that qualify to submit their application and uh, we'll begin reviewing those early next week.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to thank everyone that makes this community great. And remember to continue the social distancing. And last week, it was spring and today it's winter. So um, just keep the faith and stay safe. Thank you.
You so much, Ms. Hoppy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I um, you know, the with the child abuse prevention um, awareness month is this month and the Victims' Rights Week. I just wanted to save to tell, is that backwards? Can you guys read that?
You got it. That's good.
Yeah, okay. Save to tell is is what um, our children use in the schools when um, there's things like they have friends that are talking about suicide or they're cutting or they feel like they're being um, hurt at home or they feel like their friends are, don't have any food. So what's unfortunate is that with our kiddos not in school, they don't have this message on the walls of the school or um, you know, they don't have this message um, being promoted to them as often. And so uh, and I know sometimes I will read off a number and I just rattle it off. And so I did it, put it up there so people could write it down. If there's a kiddo in your in your life that um, is a neighbor or a friend of one of your kiddos, um, please share that number with them. Right, unfortunately, while our kids aren't in school, sometimes that was the only safe place they had. So uh, please share that number and um, let's hope that they're staying safe at home.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you all for your comments. I I want to thank uh, thank staff for the good work that they've done this week. We did, as Mr. Stites mentioned, we we had two uh, training sessions. I want to thank you if you were able to participate and and to view those. Uh, hopefully we are becoming more familiar with this uh, virtual format because we're going to need to keep using it. Um, I would um, like to have a special shout out to the uh, to the health workers and and first responders and EMS teams and and uh, other really terrific help that we have in our community. Uh, these people are are our neighbors. Uh, they're doing great uh, great service for our community and we we greatly appreciate your uh, your help. Uh, to our citizens, when I look around, I see uh, I see really good um, people practicing uh, the the social distancing and and wearing face masks in uh, commensurate with the local order. And on on top of that, I see a lot of citizen support for other other people in their community for supporting businesses. Uh, we're a small business and and uh, the community has really come together and and supporting us and I hope, I hope you'll continue to do that. Uh, these are, these are trying times uh, for everyone. Um, we will we will hang together on this uh, on this issue and we will, we will come out stronger. Um, so the only thing I can say is uh, uh, take heart. Uh, we're all in this together. Uh, stay home, wash your hands and um, and we will uh, we will persevere. So if there's any more, uh, if there's no more business to come before the council, then we will um, stand adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see you, uh, see you all next week at our study session, I believe. So.